When you spoke and never came over.
I didn't come on.
Okay, he just let me know.
I'd like to call to order the council meeting of May 11th, 2015. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak.
Here.
Peg Conway.
Here.
Bill Doring.
Here.
Ed Hattonback.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolf.
Scott Larmer.
Here.
Kevin Frank.
Here.
Chief Wallace.
Here.
Anyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting. There was one correction to the minutes that were distributed over the weekend and that change is in front of everyone. If there are no, are there any other changes to the minutes? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. Next item on the agenda is the finance report for March 2015.
Including your council packet was the report for finances for the month of March 2015. As a quick summary of some of the items included in your packet in regards to the earnings tax collections for the month of March, that totaled a little over eighty-one thousand dollars. Now that's down about forty-three percent from March of 2014's collection of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And so overall, from year to date, that would make us down about twelve point one percent. So our total collections this year have been just a little over half a million dollars. That represents about twenty percent of what we had anticipated collecting for the month, for the year of 2015. We did not receive any real estate property tax in the month of March that is typically released by the county during the month of April. The local government fund netted a little over thirty-seven hundred dollars for the month of March. Our total revenue for the month of March was just a little over a hundred thousand dollars. So it's a very low revenue month for us. Our expenses were three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So at this point in the calendar, we have spent about twenty-five percent of the budget. That represents one point one million dollars of the four point two million dollar budget that we have. The unencumbered general fund balance sits right now at the end of March at two point nine million dollars. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And this evening, we have two residents that have asked to address the council. Nemet, wanna?
Hello.
Just please state your name and your address and the subject that you're going to be talking about this evening.
I am Nimet Rosalme. I live at eighty-five hundred and Haven Drive. And I'm going to talk about the ordinance where we are going to, trying to reduce it by forty percent. So when my husband and I bought our house from forty-seven years ago, we were criticized because this was Amberly, an elite and exceptional neighborhood. And it was, and we loved it, and we still love it. And, oh, okay, thank you. And I remember vividly when Chief Kruger came to welcome us to the village and explain how things work in the village. And he said that every year, a certain area of the village is paved and the curving is done. This way, by four or five years, the whole village was taken care of, and then they would start all over again. So these were the fat years. Then came the lean years. So I just couldn't keep myself off looking at the analogy, when you are married to a professor who teaches, and he's an expert on the story of Joseph, you know, the lean years and the fat years, and he rubs off on you. Anyway, the lean years came, and with that came flooded basements. We complained to the village, and the manager came, and director of maintenance came, and they said, "We are fine." And he said, "We are fine, except that we have to do this, and this, and that, and there's no money." So the mayor at the time, Bob Stewart, and councilman Mel Shear devised and established the stormwater utility, the stormwater advisory council, and stormwater fees. As a member of the stormwater advisory committee, I am very proud to say that in the ensuing years, we've collected and spent close to four million dollars to repair and fix the stormwater utility of the village. Now we have this ordinance in front of us where the fees need to be reduced by forty percent. I talked to my neighbors, and to friends, to other people. Some people don't absolutely don't want to reduce the fees at all. And some people said, maybe the village, the council, in their wisdom, they know something. We will accept it by fifteen, twenty percent reduction. Now we are televising the pipes underground. We don't know what has been there. Some of them are being cured with in-place linings, and we'll see what will happen. So the thing is, we should always have a nest egg to cope with the unforeseen, because you can't, you can't fight mother nature. You never know what is underground and what can happen in a jiffy like that. So I urge the council to take the middle road and think well, and do the right thing for the residents. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay, very much appreciate your input, and I appreciate your service on the advisory council, and the council will take that into consideration. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Rulie.
Thank you, Mayor. I will.
Again, if you could just state your name and your address.
My name is Jim Rulie, and I'm a resident of Amberly. My address is six eight one five Beachlands Drive. I'm here today as a member of an events committee working on the seventy-fifth anniversary. And I'd like to pay respect to those who are on the committee before I actually get to my comments. The events committee consists of Kathy Kramer, who's the chair, Peg Conway, Stacy Lefton, Nancy Reacy, Sandy Peywin, and Patty and Jim Rulie. And the events committee has been working closely with Mayor Muthing throughout the entire process to this point. Peg Conway and I are working on communication details. The reason for my visit here today is to update council on the plans to communicate with all residents about how to support and be involved with the creation of a mural to commemorate the seventy-fifth anniversary. So the following that I'm going to give you here is just a summary of the information that will be sent to all residents in the next few days via the village website and through a phone call to all residents, which is in regard to, again, commemorative mural for the seventy-fifth anniversary. The seventy-fifth anniversary events committee has worked with Kennedy Heights Art Center to select a highly regarded professional artist by the name of Cedric Cox, who has produced several murals with artworks in Cincinnati and Dayton. The mural will be installed on a section of the retaining wall just north of the tennis courts on Village Wall at Brown's. Village maintenance staff is attaching the paintable surface to this wall. There will be an unveiling of the mural during the picnic on August 16th. The mural will be designed with in-put from residents. And there are two ways for residents to provide in-put. Residents can participate via a short online survey or at a phone call meeting scheduled for next week, May 19th, from seven a.m. to 30 p.m. Resident artists, ages fourteen to adult, may apply to help the professional artist paint the mural on weekdays from July 6th to July 24th. Up to ten residents may participate. The mural will be funded with donations by residents. So the actual text of these messages that are going on the website and the script for the phone calls will be emailed to each council member and the village manager before the messages go out. That's all I have to uplink the council on right now. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay, well, again, thank you very much, and thanks to everyone on the committee for all their work that they've undertaken. Next item on the agenda is committee reports, and we first will go to the law committee.
This is the third reading of ordinance number 2015 dash three, ordinance for the disposition of real property. The ordinance changes the strictly competitive bidding process to allow council to include a variety of factors in the sale of property owned by the village. These factors include but are not limited to economic development objectives, the facilitation of development of other improvements to the village, the creation of jobs, the creation of revenue for the village, avoiding costs to maintain our own property, and fulfillment of objectives regarding the planning and development of the village.
Okay, since this is the third reading of this particular ordinance, it would be appropriate now, if anyone would like to make a motion, to adopt this particular ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2015 dash three, which establishes criteria for the disposition of real property for Amberly Village. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 2015 dash three. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Bill Doring.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Okay, does that complete the law committee?
That does complete the law committee report.
Okay, we will now move on to the streets and public utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is the second reading of the ordinance authorizing modification of stormwater rates. And just to respond to Nemet's comments earlier, and she's been a longstanding member of the committee, I'm currently the chairman of the stormwater advisory group, and I share her concerns, but I think since we canceled the one major project that we still had on the list of major projects to do, which was the Willa Brook Drive and Willa Brook Lane retention pool, which had an approximate cost of a half million dollars, which the only benefit there was, was the reduced flooding of certain front yards, and it just, in our opinion, wasn't worth a half million dollars to do that. Yes, the ordinance does reduce it by forty percent, and more, but importantly to that, we can increase it by forty percent if we want to, if something major happens. We could come right back and do the same resolution and reverse and increase it by forty percent. So I think we have a cushion there with the ability to change that, you know, by vote of the council. So yes, we are televising the, you know, we've got a whole fourth of the village done. We did find a couple of things that needed to be fixed, and the advantage is too that is getting it up front, or before we have a collapse and so forth, we can do the relining with the plastic material. So I still feel that the forty percent reduction is in line with the expectations over the next few years for the stormwater financial needs. Mayor, do I need to read the entire ordinance or just the highlights?
You can just read the highlights, and just from a process standpoint for all council members, I mean, I understand that there may be some people who want to discuss whether forty percent is appropriate or not. And I think probably the best time to do that, because what we would do is that would be done through an amendment to the ordinance, and so what we will do is we will have that discussion of that potential amendment at the third reading of the ordinance.
Well, so we have the second reading of ordinance 2015 dash five, authorizing modification of stormwater rates in an effect that would reduce by forty percent the various pools of rates for the residents and businesses and so forth. So it's forty percent across the board, so whatever you're paying a hundred dollars now, then you're going to be paying sixty dollars in the future. That's pretty much the bottom line there. So nothing, the formulas don't change, because there's an extensive formula based on the size of your lot and how much soil versus concrete or asphalt or something is on there. So I won't go through all that. So there it is.
Is the text of this online somewhere? Like if someone wanted to look it up, where is it for residents? Under Stormwater Committee? Proposed legislation. A proposed legislation, okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion of the, on the second reading of the ordinance?
Okay, moving on. The next item is Resolution 2015 dash twelve, which is authorizing the recognition of National Public Works Week in Amberly Village. You know, probably, you know, we are well-known for our police and fire protection in the village, and we also are well-known for our snow removal abilities, but, you know, the maintenance department does a lot more than just keep the streets cleaned during the snowy season. They do pick up our leaves and branches. You know, more importantly, they're on duty, they're on call twenty-four seven, because all of them are members of the fire department as well. So they literally breathe and live Amberly Village in their daily work lives. And it's important that we recognize, you know, the dedication that we have from all those employees. You know, I've seen them in action with cleaning out the headwaters of various creeks and so forth, and, but they're kind of the pillars of the village. You know, they're always there, but no one ever sees them. So I think it's really important that we acknowledge this National Public Works Weeks. So I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015 dash twelve proclaiming May 17th to 23rd as National Public Works Week in Amberly Village. Is there any discussion on? I mean, the one thing I would say is, in addition to what Councilman Doring said, is, you know, that you, when you see our maintenance workers, it's an extension of the culture of the rest of the employees of Amberly Village. They really, they recognize residents, they work with residents, and they really go out of their way to do as much as possible for our residents. And, you know, one thing, as I've worked with them in the last few weeks on the, some things associated with the seventy-fifth anniversary, the creativity of these people is very impressive. You know, they really do try to go, to get creative and find creative ways around problems. So I think it's a great thing. So it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015 dash twelve proclaiming May 17th to 23rd as National Public Works Week. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Let's hear the by-report.
Okay, we will now move on to the finance committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I wish to introduce a resolution to amend appropriations for the general fund, to have sufficient funds to cover expenses for the seventy-fifth anniversary, and to amend appropriations for the capital projects facilities fund to expend the balance. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 2015 dash seven, Part One, which is to set up a twenty thousand dollar, to appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of providing funds to be used to celebrate and commemorate the seventy-fifth anniversary of Amberly Village. And Section Two is a major dollar, three dollars and seventy-three cents for the capital projects public facilities fund to put a new roof on the North Side facility. So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2015 dash seven. Is there any discussion?
Did we need approval for three dollars and seventy-three cents?
We actually have a fund that has a balance of three dollars and seventy-three cents that did not get appropriated when we asked the council to appropriate the monies in the 2015 budget. So in order to deactivate that fund, we want to expend those monies. We are putting a roof on the maintenance garage, and so we can use the balance in that fund, so this will help us clear those funds in the account.
I mean, the one thing I wanted to mention concerning this ordinance, the process on the seventy-fifth anniversary is, today we're appropriating twenty thousand dollars. Mr. Rulie earlier mentioned that we are going to be doing fundraising for the event. The way the process will work is, the village is expending the money as we receive donations that will be brought into the general fund of the village as a donation to the general fund, just as if someone wanted to make a donation to our parks or something like that. It's similar to that. And what these funds will provide for is, the day of the picnic, we have various events and food and things like that planned, and will also, as Mr. Rulie mentioned, he mentioned the mural, it will provide the funds for that, but as he mentioned, that will be covered by donations that will be revenues to the village. Okay, are there other questions or comments?
I just wanted to make one other point, and I'm also working on the seventy-fifth anniversary. We anticipate that fundraising will cover at least half of the amount that will be spent. So although the, this proposed allocation is for up to twenty thousand dollars, we expect to raise at least half of that amount for the event.
This is an appropriation, which is the expense, it doesn't, there's no, so to speak, budget item for the revenue to be earned through, to this fund.
Councilman Doring, did you have something?
You've already covered it.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2015 dash seven, amending appropriations for fiscal year 2015. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Bill Doring.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
The other item on my report, last week, we received a letter, or actually, we received a copy of the audit report for the pensionable fund for the police, Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund, for the, our share of the coverage for our personnel, and I'm pleased to report that the state auditor has given us a clean audit, or clean opinion. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions related to the last item on the finance report? If not, we will move on to the police and fire committee.
Okay, and I have a resolution proclaiming this week as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. This national observance began in 1962 after a proclamation by President Kennedy. Today, a local celebration was held in downtown Cincinnati, attended by numerous law enforcement agencies, including Amberly Village. It began with remarks at Fountain Square, continued with a parade up to the police memorial at Ezra Charles Drive, where there were additional ceremonies, particularly laying of wreaths at the memorial. Amberly Police Officer Mike Koenig is a member of the Hamilton County Police Association Color Guard, and he was part of the ceremony, marching in the parade and the other aspects, and he is currently traveling to Washington, DC in that capacity to participate in national ceremonies throughout the week. The focus of the week is on remembering officers who have died in the line of duty, which was particularly poignant today, given the recent events in New York and Mississippi. All this week, Amberly Village officers will wear a black band across their badges in memory of fallen officers. An average of a hundred and forty-five American police officers are killed in the line of duty each year, and an average of more than fifty-eight thousand officers are assaulted in the course of performing their duties. The week is also a time to appreciate the work of law enforcement officers, which we are very prone to do here in Amberly Village. Within our borders, we know the great service that we receive and the great people that work here, but today it was good to appreciate that within the larger community. I attended the Fountain Square portion, and during the formal remarks, I was very struck by the Cincinnati police chief's speaking about the importance of relationships between the police officers and the community as being important to preventing the kinds of situations we're seeing elsewhere. And then after that ceremony, along with Mayor Muthing and Scott Larmer, I was introduced to the JCC's Director of Security, who is a former FBI agent, and he was immediately, of course, complimentary of our officers and their work and their capabilities, but he specifically mentioned that wherever he's, compared to everywhere else he's ever worked, he has never seen the degree of relationships that we enjoy here between the community and the police. And this was a different person, for all of your benefit, than the person who wrote the letter that was in our council packet. So I move that we proclaim the week of May 11th to 17th, 2015, as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15th, 2015, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Amberly Village. So moved.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015 dash thirteen proclaiming the week of May 11th to 17th, 2015, as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Are there any comments from other council members? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2015 dash thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Okay, we will now move on to the managers' report.
I'd like to mention a couple of items from the managers' report. The first item is in regards to our service department. Part of our efforts to collaborate with other governments is obvious to you, and some of those aren't quite as obvious. The one that's probably not as obvious is that we actually take any obsolete equipment, and we partner with Hamilton County to auction that equipment. So we recently had the opportunity to do this. We have quite a few mowers, we have some weed eaters, leaf blowers, and some different pieces of equipment that we're able to put on the Hamilton County website and seek bids for those items. Obviously, we take the highest bid. We recently did that, and it generated a little over seven thousand dollars for the village. So it was a good move on our part. It also gives us an opportunity to collaborate with other local governments, specifically Hamilton County in this particular situation. I also wanted to mention that, from a personnel standpoint, we have hired our last replacement maintenance worker. We have a new maintenance worker that started on April the 27th. His name is David Stone, so that completes our department. All the budgeted positions are now filled in the maintenance department. And on the police department's side, we have made a hire, Delorisco Summerler has been hired as the replacement officer in our, in our police department. He will be joining us from his tenure in the village of Lachland. Has been an officer there since 2009. His start date is still being finalized, but we anticipate that he will begin before June 1st, which will enable him, along with our two newest maintenance workers, to attend fire school. Fire school is a very intense program, and it's offered only at certain times of the year, so it's to our advantage to have all three of those in fire school, so they can be well-trained and equipped in order to carry out their duties. And the last item I wanted to mention is the bike safety fair. We have been holding this, I believe, for the last two or three years, and this year it's going to be held on Sunday, May the 31st, and that'll be held from noon until 3:00 p.m. here at the Amberly Village Municipal Building. We'll hold that out in the firehouse. We encourage residents, especially those with kids, to bring their bikes and bring their kids- their kids' helmets and get fitted for those helmets, do the proper fitting. We'll have some safety training going on in regards to how to maneuver your bike. We'll have an obstacle course set up. It'll be an opportunity for us to share information about bike safety with not only the kids, but also with the parents. So, we'd encourage everyone to attend on May thirty-first from noon until three PM. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we will move on to the chief's report.
It'd be nice and short. I just want to say thanks to the mayor, Councilman Conway, and the village manager for attending the police memorial. Our relationship with the community is important and strong, but also the support that we get from council as a whole, you know, I think it sets us apart. It makes it easier for us to do our job, to continue to maintain the relationship and have the support we do from each and every member of the council. And I just want to say we truly appreciate it. Mr. Larmour talked about the bike safety event. We still have some volunteer positions open. If anybody would like to assist and volunteer, they can contact the police department and speak to Officer Andrea Alt, and she'd be more than happy to accept the volunteers. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the chief? If not, we'll move on to the mayor's report. And the only thing I have tonight is to report from the Environmental Stewardship Committee, which I serve as a member, as the council rep on the Environmental Stewardship Committee. The committee last met on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. At that, we went through with Hamilton County Public Health, the environmental enhancement tool. What we are doing with that tool is looking to see if there's good things that we should be doing in Amberly Village. We very much control creating what agenda we want to do within that. And so, I think what you will see over the remaining months of two thousand and fifteen and early two thousand and sixteen, there will be a number of education events that the Environmental Stewardship Committee will be undertaking around water quality and good things that residents should be doing as far as the fertilizers that they put on their lawn and so forth. And then, we also will be having an event in early June related to the stormwater, collection of stormwater via rain barrels. And that is in fact going to be an education event put on by a young lady who attends Mount Notre Dame, who has received a grant for a thousand dollars, which will be available to buy rain barrels. And so, residents that come to the event will be eligible to be in line for those rain barrels. And again, that will be on June tenth, and it's at six thirty in the Amberly Village Community Room. Next, there was the final report given at the meeting related to the One Stop Drop, and One Stop Drop is our recycling event. We held the One Stop Drop event for the third time at the end of March. At the event, we collected twenty-two point four tons, and that was mainly in the form of paper and electronics. This was up slightly from twenty-two, just over twenty-two tons in two thousand and fourteen. There was a five-ton increase in paper and a three-ton decrease in electronics between the two events. Then, we, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we had Arbor Day celebration here in Amberly Village in, on April twenty-fourth, I think it was, where we planted a tree, and that was a silver linden that was planted over on the side of the tennis court. The next item I wanted to mention was Amberly Village has received for the eleventh consecutive year, the Tree City USA Award, and we also received a growth award for the seventh time. And Wendy Van Buren from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources will be coming to the June council meeting to present those awards to Amberly Village. And then, finally, related to Environmental Stewardship Committee, the next meeting will be June fifteenth. The committee normally meets every month at the, on the last Monday of the month, but because the last Monday of May happens to fall on Memorial Day, we are combining the May and June meetings, and we will be meeting on June fifteenth at seven PM in the, in the community room. And I encourage any residents interested to come. And we have in fact had a lot of excellent input from non-residents over the past couple months. We've had a couple who live right on the edge of Amberly Village, who have been making, making great contributions to the, to the Environmental Stewardship Committee process. So, they're very knowledgeable and have been making some very valuable contributions. So, that concludes my, the mayor's report. Are there any questions? If not, is there any new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. I thank you for your attendance.